Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the meeting of the Breezy Point Planning Commission. I will call the meeting to order and ask for approval of the January 12 minutes.
So move to...
Motion in a second. Any discussion of those minutes?
Who's that?
There. Okay. Larry, do you have any questions?
Nope, I read them beforehand and I think I had one kind of question issue. But it's, yeah, I was here, was on that 15-foot setback rule with the table that for a while and if I were here, I probably would've commented on that.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Motion passed. City Council is on report. Jerry isn't here, but maybe Joe can...
Sure. We received bids. They came in quite favorably. We called for an assessment hearing. This is for Winter Trail and Scenic Overlook. The assessment hearing is called for the 22nd of February and hopefully, well, we'll see how the hearing goes and if it goes favorably, the council will then order the project and the assessments. We renewed the Pelican Township Police Contract. We purchased a sewer truck and a utility box, replacing the existing one. Sewer plant update was just giving us an idea of where we're at in terms of capacity and use. And then the annual year-end fund transfers were accomplished. This is where we kind of moved things to revolve in capital fund to reserve for future use. Any questions?
No questions? Okay. Well, then move to open forum number one. Would anyone like to speak during open forum number one?
Jeff Johnson, Representative White Birch. I'm here on behalf of White Birch. We received a letter from the Jerry and thought I would just come since the meeting was today. I think we received the letter yesterday. I thought I would just come here and talk with you guys if I could do that and try and get some resolution on a couple of the issues that Jerry brings up here. Did you guys get a copy of this letter by any chance?
No.
Okay. It says, he's got two issues on here from the employee dorm and laundry that were built. And I'll just summarize, I'll just read his summaries. "There is concern that the fence is not secured as anyone can enter the fenced area by walking around the west end of the fence. There is concern that items stored in the fenced area protrude above the fence. There is also further concern that the dumpster outside the fenced area is considered outside storage and should be behind the screened area." If you guys want that fence fully, all the way around, that, we'll do that. I guess, again, as we, I think the last time I was here, we talked about it. I'm not sure when that was, if that was this fall earlier or later, earlier last fall. I said that we just basically took the walls for the fence and moved them to the other end of the building, not even thinking that they weren't six feet high, but they weren't. We've since raised that up to the six-foot level as you guys had requested. West leg on that, we did not put the back, the return back to the building on it, basically. If you absolutely have to have that, we'll put that on there. We didn't think it was necessary because of the bank that's back there. So there's, it's not like the, you know, somebody could walk around there, but nobody could really see back through there. So we didn't feel that that was necessary to put the back there. I guess I looked at it as more of a screening issue than a security issue. If you want that on there, we'll put that on there. Do you want to take these one at a time or how do you want to do this?
One at a time, probably.
Okay. Let's start with that one then. What would you, what do you guys, I don't know who, they might have a comment on this as well.
Just a point of order, if this is open forum, shouldn't it just be open forum, not on the agenda? Or added to the agenda? I don't, I'm just asking.
We really didn't anticipate that there was going to be an issue in front of the Planning Commission this evening. And if we would've anticipated that, you would've gotten a copy of the letter at the same time. This letter just went out last week. Might've been Friday, I believe, Thursday or Friday, based on some concerns that we've heard as staff, more than anything else. You certainly could schedule it. Maybe it might be a better situation rather than open forum. Maybe if we scheduled it under other and the, on the agenda and you could dedicate some more time to it. But, you know, you probably need to have a copy of the letter that went out too that would be very helpful for you folks.
We don't feel like we have enough information to have this done.
And the CUP at this time. So it might be premature to be talking about it, you know, just in the open forum portion of this meeting.
And there aren't, I assume, any deadlines that we're dealing with in terms of this communication?
They're done on here.
No. From the staff standpoint, we got a request from the building inspector that the resort wanted to close out and get its certificate of occupancy issued for the building. We looked at the CUP and we looked at what had been done and we received some complaints, quite frankly, and compared those and issued the letter that says, "We'd like to do, close this out. Please give us a plan as far as how you want to address it." We don't have a deadline on it. We would like to get it done as soon as possible. I know they would like to get their certificate of occupancy done. We also recognize that it's the middle of January and there isn't going to be a lot of post holes pounded and trees planted and those type of things. So, and I know and I appreciate Jeff wanting to get it done, but it might be a little premature to be having the conversation.
How do the other commissioners feel? I guess my feeling is if it could wait until next month's meeting and the, and we could receive a copy of the letter and it be placed on the agenda, it would seem to me that that would be the best approach.
I wouldn't be uncomfortable having a discussion about it with absolutely no information in front of me.
What about his occupancy certificate?
Well, I would like to at least hear Jeff's concerns. We worry about it next month, but let him go through his letter, but not, does not do one at a time, just go through what those issues are and then we will have an advanced knowledge as to what we're going to be looking at and what your concerns really are.
They're operating under a temporary certificate of occupancy today. The final hasn't been issued and the final can't be issued according to the CUP until the terms of the CUP have been conformed to. It isn't going to affect operations, one iota whether this gets thrown out for 30 days or 10 days. I think, you know, from staff standpoint, we'd like to put it to bed. And I'm sure from the resort standpoint, they'd like to put it to bed too and have some understanding, but...
Any reaction to Larry's...
I think it's fine to listen to the whole thing as long as we understand there's not a discussion, we're just getting information.
Okay. Can we do that, Jeff?
I'll do my best.
Okay.
Okay. So there is a concern the fence is not secured. That's one thing and I pretty much have talked about that. We can address that next month. Concern that items stored in the fenced area protrude above the fence. I drove by yesterday and today, there's nothing sticking up above the fence. I think that may have been a leftover concern from last fall and that, I think in my mind has been remedied. We raised the fence up to the six-foot level and I've talked with maintenance and they can't have stuff sticking above it and there was nothing above it when I drove by. Further concern that the dumpster outside the fenced area is considered outside storage, should be behind the screened area. The dumpster is just that, it's a dumpster, it's a roll-off. It's not a permanent structure. It's a, it's been there quite a bit, in and out. It's not the same one all the time, of course. But when I met with staff last fall on the six-foot fence issue, I asked about the dumpster and we talked also about the pieces of equipment that are there. And they said that, well, you know, you look at ours, our garage over here, we have equipment that's outside the garage. We get that. We're not worried about the equipment or the dumpster, it's the storage stuff. Now they're saying maybe the dumpster is storage and so, you know, that's one thing where I'm going to need a little direction from you guys on that dumpster. And then the second condition is, concern here is that the plan was submitted by Breezy Point Resort, approved by the Planning Commission, is not being followed specifically along airport road. Your plan indicates that approximately 40 10-foot pines spaced 15 feet apart would be planted. Today, there are approximately 35 trees that have been planted, but the average height of the trees is less than six foot landscaping plan attached. And I guess my only issue here is this. We planted the trees last spring and they all died because you're not supposed to plant pine trees in the spring. You just need to wait till the fall when they go dormant. And so we planted them again last fall. When I gave the landscaping plan shown here to staff, he said, "Don't tell me how many trees are going to be there because I don't want to have something to have to hold you to." And so we didn't talk number. That's why he says approximately 40 and there's 35. Again, that we planted twice, so that's 70 trees so far. They were taller than what they are right now, but the neighbor to the east, Cliff Mueller, I think is his name, was very kind. He augured in the holes for us. So we put the trees where he put the holes for us. And that's how we came up with the number. If it's 35, it's 35. I'm not arguing the number of trees there at all. But he put in the holes and we put the trees in the holes that he made for us. And then after we put in the trees, he came back and clipped the tops. So they used to be taller trees, but he clipped the tops off of them so that they would grow out instead of up. And we're fine with that because that's what he wanted. We also made sure to put the tallest trees and the fullest trees between his place and our place and between the Maronis and our place to try and help with that issue of the screening. No matter what size tree you put in there, it's going to be a while before they fill out and take over. And so in our minds, we've done it twice. If you want us to jerk them back out again, we'll do it again. I know that there's at least one dead one there that we'll take care of next fall when we can replant again, but that's, those are the issues right there in a nutshell for you, so. And I assume I'll get notice of this being on the agenda for next month, so. Is there any questions? I guess I should ask that of me.
No, I would just ask, and you probably mentioned this, could we get a copy of their permit?
Sure.
Thank you, Jeff. Would anyone else like to make any comments during the open forum? If not, we'll pause open forum number one and move to a variance application, a public hearing on the variance application. The application is to construct a home addition, to construct a covered entry and construct a garage addition. So I will open that public hearing and ask Jerry to go over his staff review reports.
Actually, there's, this application is an existing residence that's located at 8636 Ren Drive. The legal description is Lot 287, 15th addition to Breezy Point Estates. The zoning is R3 sewered. The required setbacks in that zoning district are, from the road right of way is 35 feet, from the side is 10 feet, and from the rear is 35 feet. The existing residence is an L-shaped residence. If you drive down that Ren Drive, you see that most of the residences there were probably built at the same time or generally the same type of construction. I guess maybe you'd call it ranch-type construction with log sighting, something like that. The existing structure today is located 21 feet from the right of way. Thus, it is considered a legal non-conforming use. The application was actually for three variances. One to add a approximately 170-square-foot addition to the rear of the structure. That addition that's proposed would be kind of in the corner of the L, facing the back or facing the fairway for the golf course. That proposed addition would also be entirely within what we would consider the building envelope, so it would be within all setback areas. The other request was for a stoop that is approximately eight by six. Stoops are governed by the definition of setback and stoops are not to exceed 30 square feet and, but they can encroach into the setback. The third request was for a garage addition on the front of the existing structure attached that would, is proposed to be three tenths of a foot from the right-of-way line. In a nutshell, that is the, the request. I think there's a site plan in your package. There's also a copy or there's a picture of the type of structure that you see from the road. Staff has recommended that the 170-square-foot addition to the rear of the structure be approved. We recommend that the variance for the garage be denied. We also recommend that the stoop variance be denied also. We can't find that there's a practical difficulty to make those additions to the front of the building. We also believe that if, in fact, they were made, it would alter the character of the neighborhood somewhat. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions, Jerry?
Yes, sir. I don't think so at this time. Are we going to hear from the applicant?
Nothing. I read it and understand it.
Okay. Would the applicant like to make some comments?
The only thing I would add is that they get the garage, if they would do the garage, they would take down the encroaching, include the little storage building.
Joe, can you have him introduce himself?
Yes.
Oh, Phil, I'm sorry, Phil Shaw from BFS Design. Yeah, the reason for the garage was to take care of the storage buildings that are now encroaching on the east property line there.
Phil, you would be the...
Designer, designer, not the contractor. Yeah, just the designer. Yeah, and that was, otherwise it was all...
I might add that right now it's close, but there wouldn't be any impervious coverage restrictions here. He's within the 30%. I think the proposal that was made for the, with the variance or the three variances accommodated the 30%, so that's not an issue in this. We're really looking at whether the encroachments are practical difficulties and whether the encroachments should be allowed.
No, that's all I, that's all I have, really.
Any other comments? Anyone else?
Well, I just have one thing I'd like to say about it.
Could you come up to the speaker and introduce yourself, please?
My name is Rita Holsey and I've lived here quite a few years and the house that you're talking about, I know quite well. And when he, this gentleman, Jerry, says that it'll affect the look of the neighborhood, well, right across the street, that little street, there's just a garage. There's no house attached, there's nothing. You gave permission just to have a garage sitting there. So I thought that changed the look of the neighborhood, that that was okay. And here's a woman who wants to add a garage to make a year-round house up here for herself and she's paid taxes on this place for about 40 years now. And I just think that maybe you should consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Joe?
Could you come up to that?
Me.
I mean, he kind of did ruin next door to me. It was just a garage, a double garage.
Could you give us your name?
Oh, yeah, I can.
And the neighborhood?
Anyway, I guess he was supposed to put a house on there, but he doesn't come up anymore. Now the kids have it and it doesn't do anything for the neighborhood, I'll tell you. One little garage would be better. And she wants to live up here full-time, so it wouldn't hurt it. I'm right across the street, it doesn't make any difference to the golf course. It's not going to bother anybody. Anyway, so I'm kind of for it, but to let her do it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Maybe these were public statements, but are there any public statements, any other statements about this application that...
With the other neighbors?
Yes. We do have a memo from someone in front of us.
Actually, there's, we received two emails in opposition and we also received some phone calls to the same. But for the record, we do have two emails that were received by staff talking to the issue.
Yes, yes. Jerry, do you have anything specific about the phone call, phone input that you received?
Other than it was the neighbor, the neighbor on the one side of the structure in opposition of the garage and the encroachment to the front.
Okay. No mention of the addition as a problem?
No, everybody I've talked to doesn't have an issue with the addition.
Okay, if there are no further comments, we'll pause the public hearing and move to the next agenda item, which is the commission's discussion of the variance application. Discussion.
Be a move. Me, the garage is on our street. I've driven by it. I don't live too far from there. There's probably 20 similar units out there like that. Should we do one, do you do variances on the rest?
I drove by there yesterday and I just happened to go there when somebody was taking down a tree right next door. And I don't know if the tree had been across the road or whatever, but there was the truck with the people who were cutting down a tree and then they had put cones out. And with that truck there and the cones put out, I could not drive down the street. I had to. And it was right in the house next door. So I looked at the house, it questioned for the addition and then went around the other direction so I could see it from both sides and see as much of what I could see. I have concerns about the safety issue as much as anything. Literally, it puts this garage virtually to the, on the street. And the stoop, you know, this is already a non-conforming piece of property. The stoop would make it more non-conforming. And so, you know, I don't, per se, I wouldn't have a problem with the garage. It would look fine, whatever. It's a question of safety. And this street is already a narrow street. It's, to my way of understanding from some things I read, it's already an issue for people backing out or parking or whatever, and I think this would just compound the issue.
I personally agree 100% of what Peggy was saying. It would be a safety issue, either coming out of the garage or blocking view. If somebody came out from by the garage and into the street, the view line would certainly be obstructed. And the property's a non-conforming and I'll stretch this a step farther beyond the garage issue. The stoop issue, again, being expanded beyond what a stoop could be and also into the, too close to the right-of-way. I agree with Jerry's recommendation on the stoop as well as the garage and I do not have a problem with the expansion to the back of the house, which would be within. And I think in the past, we've looked a little more favorable for things where if the expansion to a non-conforming structure is at least where the expansion is in, it would be in, within the setbacks. That has been less of a problem, but going too close to the right-of-way or whether it be too close to the lake or too close to the wetlands, those are probably pretty strong issues of saying, why should we totally ignore the law for something that's particularly convenient for one part? You can do it for them, you can do it for the whole street and it would be a major problem.
We have two proposed resolutions within the packet. One resolution is the approval of the addition to the home. I guess it makes sense to me that we deal with that one first. Is someone prepared to make a motion? That resolution would be our approval of the addition to the rear of the home?
I would make that motion and if you want me to read the whole thing, I can, but it would be the exact motion that's on the paper here.
It's important as we make this motion to recognize that we've considered the definition of practical difficulty in the... Joe, can we get a second? Pardon me? Get a second? We just have a motion. We have a motion, but we haven't got a second. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Second, Roger. The resolution does recognize that we have considered the definition of practical difficulty and the findings consideration of a variance. Any discussion of that motion? All right, now, okay. Now, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Same? Opposed, same? Motion passed. The next resolution is a resolution that would deny the construction of the garage and the covered stoop.
I would, again, entertain a motion that would be the same as what's written here on the sheet and I'll be happy to read it if you want to. Otherwise, it would be this motion.
A second.
Second by Roger. Discussion of that motion?
I think we can just say that, you know, we have looked at the practical difficulty which is addressed here and I can understand that there is a difficulty on the part of the owner, but I also believe that the safety issue is paramount and that supersedes whatever difficulty it might be for the owner. Oh, I totally realize that, but if each of you built a garage there, there might be a real problem.
Joe, did you...
I just wanted you to review these standards real quick.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
In Jerry's memo to us, it contains the standards... In Jerry's memo to us, it contains the standards that need to be considered. Has everyone, I'm sure you have, has everyone reviewed those?
Yes.
Has everyone reviewed those standards? Do we need to go over them?
Well, just, maybe just like you've done in the past, number one, number two, and just see if there's any issues.
Are there any questions about number one? Everyone clear about that? If everyone following where that is on page two or Jerry's memo to us? Number two, is that cleared, everyone? Questions? Number five? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
What do we do with that storage building that she had there? Do we have another separate permit, and then we have to...
If you replace the storage building as is, that's not a special permit.
Okay, so it wasn't done with a new addition?
Right. But if, in fact, you're going to expand it, then you're not gonna be able to do that.
We'll move on to agenda G, which is the draft land use regulation review. Number one is residential units in the commercial zoning district, and there is a memo in our packet from Joe that I would suspect everyone has had a chance to look at. Would you elaborate?
Sure. At the last meeting, we talked about the, there's a provision within the land use chart that allows for the reconstruction, remodeling, and expansion of an existing single or multiple family home in a commercial zone. And the commission wanted some additional information. So we took a look at that. We found that there's probably ten residential properties in the commercial district. Three or maybe four of those are used commercially currently, which wouldn't pose a problem in allowing for their expansion in the future. But the rest of them would be residential properties that, under the given current language, would be permitted to expand the house in that district. Where if we remove that, which is more typical, you don't allow a commercial or expansion of a residential unit in a commercial zone, it would change that characteristic. There is some alternatives. If we wanted to just outright ban that expansion mode, they would be allowed, much like they did tonight, to ask for a variance for an expansion of a non-conforming use. Or we could make it a conditional use. It would be more appropriate, in my mind, as a variance request if that were the case. But either way, it doesn't make any difference. It's just you would ask for some additional information. Do we want to make a change to the land use ordinance or not?
Discussion, questions?
Ten units?
Yeah, ten residential houses that we... I don't know if you've got a copy of this map? Yeah, it's kinda hard to see, but there's a black X on the areas that show where the houses are.
Okay. Oh, the X's. They'll never tear the houses down and... Can I talk?
Sure, absolutely.
They'll never take the houses down and put commercial buildings in, but they could.
Well, they could, or they could convert the houses into a commercial business. And at that point, they could expand the property if it were, in fact, commercial. If it's used residentially, they want to add another bedroom or something like that, it would be prohibited unless they got a variance if it was, in fact, prohibited.
I guess from my point of view, I thought, you know, it's not such a bad idea, until I came to the end where it says clearly, but neither option meets the goal of phasing out residential properties.
That's correct.
Trying to phase them out. To me, it doesn't make sense to give them any leeway for expanding.
Right. I mean, it's more typical to see, you know, that grandfather clause, you know, allow the use to continue as long as it continues, but...
For sure.
But you wouldn't allow for an expansion.
And I wouldn't want to do it under an interim use, a conditional use, or any other use. I would say no.
What's the timing of, when these residential properties were part of the commercial, was there an ordinance that says they couldn't be there?
The best we can... Well, the best we can tell is when the ordinance was established, that clause was put in to allow residential properties in the commercial zone to continue and expand and do whatever. We went back as far as we could find records, and it was in there from the beginning.
I also kinda cross-referenced it with the commercial section of the comprehensive plan, and, I mean, there's nothing in there that suggests that we should have residential districts there, or residences, you know, as part of the district. So I guess, again, you know, from my point of view, I don't see, I would not vote for an expansion of any type.
Can you, Roger?
No, slightly confused, but...
This is pretty hard to imagine. This is a very big problem. For somebody having, who's got a business, and then they're gonna expand their home, knowing there's no way they could possibly get that money back out of their residence, I can't see a major expansion to a home that's in a commercial area. So it's, one of these things probably doesn't matter a whole lot one way or the other. I don't, just think it's not a big issue. What's the easiest fix?
Well, there's two fixes. One is leave it alone, the other is take it out of the provision in the commercial zone. They're both easy.
I'll be at the minority, but I say leave it alone.
If you were to take it out of the commercial, so you would do all the time, or would you just do one at a time? Or, I don't know, I guess...
Well, it's not like we're gonna, we're gonna move, you know, residential structures out of the commercial zone.
Right.
They can still rebuild or reconstruct if there's a fire. That's allowed under state law. So the only thing they can't do as a non-conforming structure would be to expand the building.
Right, without a variance, without a variance.
Which, as Peggy points out, is the whole purpose of zoning it commercial.
It's up to you to call whatever motion you want.
I'll give you an example. I did, we did have one gentleman that took advantage of this about three years ago or two years ago. And I, unbeknownst to me, that was, you know, typically, if it's commercially zoned, you just don't allow the increase in the volume of a non-conforming use. He came with a piece of paper in his hand that showed that this was something that was granted years ago, and he had the authority to add on to his house. In the case of this gentleman, he had a youngster in a wheelchair and needed an addition for an elevator and that type of thing. No matter what, it'd be very hard to say no to something like that. But he came prepared with the, knowing that he, when the zoning was established for that district, there was a special provision that was made that allowed them to increase the volume of their residence.
You know, this is the same problem we have with every kind of variance or deviation from what we believe a zoning district should have. And that's that, I suppose, there's always gonna be exceptions to the rule, but there's always gonna be the possibility that it's gonna change. The law changes every day. And, I mean, we understand that shoreland laws and setback laws are within the community coordination. Ordnances have changed, and I guess I look at this the same way. I don't see any point to keeping it in a plan that if we are saying it's our goal to get rid of them, then take it out. Then it's not our goal, obviously, because we're allowing them to expand. So that's, I guess you can see where I'm, where I'm gonna vote. So if we take it to...
We need a consensus, Joe.
Yeah, which we don't have, obviously. Joe, what is the timeline for making this decision? Our assumption is that the decision would need to be made tonight?
Well, I'd like to see it tonight. I mean, we're gonna have a public hearing on the changes to the ordinance next week if you feel so inclined to go for that. You know, then we can have everything set in place, and, you know, it can be shown that way. You know, I guess every ordinance I've ever worked with, and Jerry's too for that matter from our discussions, wouldn't allow an expansion of a non-conforming use as a permitted use. And so that's why I called it out, is saying this is really unusual. Maybe the commission should talk about this.
Wouldn't it make it easier if I made a motion, and then we can vote?
I'm just going to ask either for you or Larry to make a motion.
It would probably be different.
Yes.
I will make a motion that we, make sure I'm getting the wording right, that we remove the section of the ordinance that allows any kind of expansion on a residence as a permitted use in the commercial district. Does that cover it?
That covers it.
I'm fine with that motion with the exception of, it could be, I mean, I agree with that motion for anything that's new, but for existing is the only thing that I'm saying we're taking away somebody's rights that they had when they maybe first built that residence.
Just a follow-up on Larry's comment. I don't think that you have an issue with anything new, because new residences would not be allowed in a commercial district. It would only be the expansion of existing residences that you're really dealing with here.
Did I include the word expansion in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Do we have a motion and a second discussion?
Again, the motion would allow somebody still to apply for a variance if there's a special situation. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, that's one of my concerns. I just don't want to make it virtually impossible for somebody to be able to do something where there's definitely a need, like the one example that you guys brought up a few minutes ago where somebody said they had an individual, they needed to add an elevator or ramp or whatever it would be to make it useful for them to be able to use that house. There has to be a way that they could still do that, but at least if they've got the variance opportunity, that they could bring it before them and explain why their situation is different than somebody else, then I think I could probably go along with it. But I just don't, I wouldn't want to cut them off altogether.
Okay.
And that could be covered, could it not, just under the practical difficulty?
Yes, I mean, you could request a variance, you know, for a non-conforming structure as we, you know, talked about tonight.
Yeah, I'm gonna do something that I intended to do for some time now, and this is a good opportunity for me to do it, is to state for the record that my vote is for the affirmative unless I specifically say I'm voting against the motion. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yep. That's not just this motion, this is in all motions.
All motions, yeah. I realize I should have done that a long time ago, because my vote isn't being clearly stated in the voting for the motion. So unless...
Why make a motion if we forgive you?
Thank you.
Okay.
So I'll state that for the record now. Any further discussion of the motion?
The only thing I was gonna say is some of these are kinda dotted out and about. I hadn't noticed the two down here by the airport. That doesn't really affect anything anyhow. But I see.
Okay, we'll call the question. All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Opposed, the same?
Abstained.
Good. Motion passed. Very abstained.
He abstained, okay.
Number two is sign ordinance.
The good news about this is, mostly for your information, but I do want a consensus at the end. The Supreme Court, the US Supreme Court, had a ruling in Reed versus the town of Gilbert, Arizona, about signage. And they ruled that their signage ordinance was a problem because it was not content-neutral. And I think if you read through the information from the ICMA publication, you'll kinda get a better sense of what they're talking about. But when we looked at our sign ordinance, for the most part, it is content-neutral. We don't call out real estate signs like they do in the article, but we do call out election signs. And with that, talk about non-commercial speech. Both of those things are not content-neutral. They have a content to them. And we've got a few other areas where we may have some issues. Home occupations, no trespassing, or no hunting signs, sale rental construction. You know, it's really hard to understand what the court expects us to do with this ruling. I find it particularly troublesome that state law requires you to post no trespassing or no hunting signs to keep people out, but yet that's not content-neutral, and so therefore it would be against the sign ordinance. So we don't really know what to do, but we wanted you to be aware of the issue. And our recommendation is to leave things as they sit for the time being until we can get better clarity on this issue.
If you find some good articles, could you let us know? I mean, really, I struggled with this. I thought, I think I understood it, and then all of a sudden, it would be like, I don't, what are they talking about?
Well, yeah, that was, Jerry and I read it, and they, huh? You know, and then we had a discussion, and we went back and read it again. So, all right, you okay with kinda where we're at? All right.
Do you need a motion, or do you...
No.
Who enforces this, by the way? That's just a question.
Enforces what?
The signs, let's say.
Well, that'd be the zoning administrator. It'd be our responsibility.
So if somebody has a big sign up, you go out and...
Well, typically, sign permits are required, and they meet the requirements of the signed permit. Periodically, we have issues. Realtors are notorious for putting stuff out in the boulevards, mosquito squad, drone photography. You know, I mean, it's, those are kind of nuisance signs, and as we have an opportunity to pick them up, we do. But we could spend hours every day going out and being sign police, removing them. And it's just...
Kinda curious.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move to final draft of the ordinance and charts. And Joe, there's a memo from you, which you...
Well, there's a lot of information here. There's a couple of items that we talked about at the last meeting, the setback of thirty feet. I don't know if the commission wants to look at that or not. And we just got done talking about the commercial residential issue. With the discussion last month, we also talked about the interim use permit for private vehicle sales. That's been included in this disordinance. That's been included in this dis-ordinance. And frankly and honestly, I've looked at this thing so many times, if there was a mistake there, I would not see it. And so, I was hoping you folks would in fact see it. All the footnotes from the charts have been removed, and the specific language dealing with those footnotes have been added, added within the language of this ordinance. We've made the, all the changes are shown with yellow highlighting in the chart. As you know, the chart is not going to include everything that the written language would include, but it still gives us sort of a reference point, a place to start, a cheat sheet, if you will. But if there's ever questions, we would go back to the written language in the ordinance. The ordinance, section one and two, well, one deals with the, just the naming of the unnamed, or not the naming, excuse me, the location of the unnamed bodies of water. We, it did some hunting, and we figured out what those were. Section two then will delete the current chart and language within the ordinance. Section three then restates all the zoning districts. When you get to the end of that, section four then would just clarify that there's a land use chart that takes precedent, or excuse me, the language takes precedent over the chart. Section five does the same thing for the language taking precedence over the chart. Section six then removes that building-specific design criteria for minimum structures. Those were put in the individual zoning, or excuse me, residential districts. Section seven then just clarifies the home occupations are interim uses and not conditional uses. Section eight deletes a section from the ordinance that we can't enforce, it's not legal. Section nine then deals with that private motor vehicles, clarifying two rather than three vehicles. And then also, it removes the interim use permit language that we talked about previously. So, like I say, there's a lot of stuff here, a lot of it's redundant, because it is in every district, but I hope that if you find anything, please let me know, I'll fix it. I found a typo the other day, I was surprised.
I have a question, based on what we just did with the expansion in commercial, do you have to rewrite some of that 153 point?
I think I already included that change.
Okay.
No.
Yeah, I did.
Did you?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I did. What was that, what section was that again, 150?
3.040, commercial.
040.
And the reason I'm asking is because, based on the way we were operating before, that we didn't know. There's a couple of things in there, like under three permitted uses, six year construction remodel or expansion, blah, 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 for multiple residential properties.
Just hang on a second.
Page 23.
Oh, thank you.
Instruction, yes.
Oh, I didn't change it.
Then, under interim uses...
Thank you.
Under interim uses, then, what about number two, residential rentals, more than four times per year?
I think that's allowed.
That's still allowed?
I believe so.
Okay.
Let me look though, real quick.
I believe vacation rentals were allowed in commercial in our four districts.
Okay, so that will stay as it is then?
As an interim use permit, yes.
Yes, as an interim use, it's in the chart.
Same then for E, number two, residential dwelling, single, single with guest quarters, blah, 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 under excluded permitting. Would they stay the same?
Is this commercial you're still talking about?
Where, I'm on E, page 24.
Yeah, that just restates that those would not...
I kind of just, any place I saw anything about a residence, I kind of highlighted it, about, okay, I better check that out.
Although the interim use, I'm not sure about, let me check that real quick. Where is that, Jerry, do you remember?
Which one?
Interim use residential?
Vacation rental?
No. Time sure, essentially.
Well, just make a note to yourself, you know, you don't have to find it now, make a note when you're...
Okay.
Residential rentals, more than four times?
No, no, it's the interim use as excluded use, this one. I just need to check on that.
And then, do we still need to talk some more about the wetland setback?
Only if you want to. If you're happy with 30 feet, that's what I've shown is making that change in the chart, but you wanted to think about it some more, and we were going to talk about it this time. If you're happy with 30 feet, we're good with it.
I think we should give Larry a chance to offer an opinion.
Oh, okay.
That was the only one, is the state, is it the state or the county that has 15?
They have 15 feet.
And we just granted one within that deal, I don't know why we just don't change it to 15.
We discussed at the last meeting that to get 15 at the county level, you've got to install rain gardens and some other types of stormwater facilities. With the 30 feet, we're not requiring that.
So, if we did want to allow, going within that setback, we could put those restrictions on them, which would be similar to the county?
Yes.
So, 30 is actually just a, can be a...
30 would be your standard. If somebody wants to ask for a variance, we'd be looking at rain gardens and things like that.
Might be easier to deal with it as a variance and attach conditions to the variance, quite frankly.
Right. I'm not even going to bring up the mosquito issue.
We moved on, right?
Okay, someone must have...
I must open a drink or something for this.
Are we interested in doing something tonight about the 30 dollar, or 30-foot setback?
It's already there, isn't it? So, do we have to not, we don't have to do anything?
I made the change to 30.
There's trouble right here.
Yes.
If you don't mind, I just wanted to add one thing, as someone who has sat in the audience, where it's easy to say they can come in and ask for a variance, it's not always that easy to ask for a variance. Whereas if you wanted to allow a 15 like the county does with conditions, you could just go ahead and put that in there as something that you would consider if they did rain gardens and these other things. Because planning a zoning board is notoriously difficult to get variances through. I would just like to add that, if that is something you wanted to consider, you might want to put that in, because future boards would say, well, that's not what it is, why would we give them a variance for that? That's the only thing I would want to add. I don't care which way you go, I got no dog in this fight, but if you wanted to consider that, you really should look at putting that in, that you would consider it under certain circumstances. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you for hearing.
I guess that's my question, do we want to do that?
I don't. We had a long discussion last time about the 30 feet, it seemed to me, and I don't know, I don't know.
If you have a 30-foot in the setback in the ordinance, we don't have to put in there the same, but you can get a variance if, just leave it at the 30 feet, and if they want to, then apply for the variance, they would deal with that.
Was it 75 at one time?
It is, it is in new subdivisions. Still is, this is existing.
This is why we kind of compromised it, because we said it's not 75, but it's...
Right.
I move that we leave it at 30, and if the variance issue comes up, we can deal with it as a variance.
If it requires a second, I'll second it.
Yep, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion passed. Good, thank you. The question is, are we ready to move this to a public hearing in March?
Yep, I don't need a motion, but I do need a consensus. Are people okay with it? I'll make, I'll check...
People looked at it a lot more than I have.
I did find that one, I got to look for the other one, though.
It seems as though we have done our due diligence.
Okay.
So, we will look forward to a public hearing for this in March.
Yep, I do have one thing to point out, Larry said he won't be here at the next meeting.
March is my, got to get away to be warm again.
I know, and I'm not going to be here either.
Oh, well, maybe we want to postpone it.
And I think last year in March, we had an issue with availability of people as well, because there was not a meeting last March either.
So, maybe we want to have the public hearing in April? Okay.
That makes sense, does that make sense to you, Roger?
Yeah, maybe, the possibility, it may be in Texas. It's not crisis.
What is a four?
Well, it's only three. It's majority. But, I mean, this is fairly large change, I mean, it'll be in a...
So, potentially, we would have three in March, but...
Yes.
Roger, just that you may be gone to, may be gone to...
My daughter gets her way, we'll be in Texas.
Sounds like April is the time to do it.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move to each draft comprehensive plan rewrite. Again, there's a memo from Joe in our packet, Joe, would you like to...
Well, the committee was Carol and Tom and Jerry and I and Gary Bach, and we went through the comprehensive plan. And for the most part, we basically removed things that have been accomplished, the goals that were achieved, and those sorts of things. There's not a lot of new goals in the plan. There is some changes, obviously. We added in the master park plan, which is in there, there's some formatting changes. The, most of the maps changed to some extent, as we talked about at the last meeting, the future land use map has changed. All the maps have the change from the DNR property we had hoped for future parkland, and that's now wooded residential. You know, but for the most part, it's pretty much the same, but updated. So, I'm not quite sure what more to say on that, but if there's questions or concerns or comments, I know Peggy brought something up, which I thought was interesting, right before the meeting, do you want to talk about that?
Sure, I've actually got three things to bring up.
Okay.
Okay, for one of them, and this is for the people sitting up here, go to page 4-13. And I, this is a question more than anything else, but down in the corner, number two, variances, do not grant variances to setback or maximum lot coverage regulations in the shoreline management overlay zoning district, either for existing or new structures. That's a pretty definitive statement, and so, my question is, or my comment, or whatever, why do we even have somebody put in there 250 and bring it here to us if we are sort of being kind of told, don't grant it? Aside from, you know, Jerry said it's, you know, kind of, everybody has a right to complain or to ask for a variance, and so, we have that. So, I'm not saying we should take this out, I'm just wondering if that isn't a pretty strong and definitive statement, if indeed we do and have granted variances.
And we have.
And we have.
You know, I'm just shooting from the hip here, but maybe it should say, consider strongly not granting, or something like that.
I, I didn't look to see if it was written this way last time, probably, I don't know.
I'm pretty sure it was, because I don't remember changing that.
This has not changed.
And, you know, I just, I do believe the citizens have the right to question it, but this kind of, if we take that seriously, that's kind of a mandate to us.
Yeah, because one of the conditions is, does it comply with the comprehensive plan? And that would be no.
Exactly. So, I just, I wanted to point that out, I don't know.
Can we get some discussion on that?
It's kind of cut and dry.
Larry, do you want to start with you? Making sure that I'm on the right page, we're looking at number two, page 430 down here, and saying, do not, yet, that is, that is probably unusual language, in that you should always be able to consider it, whether, whether you want to grant it or not. I mean, and again, what Joe was saying, just, strongly suggest not to...
Or, you know, maybe it is the goal, or I don't know what...
The goal could still be not granted, but that doesn't mean you can't.
Right. And this doesn't say we can't, because by law, I think probably, if, I mean, if anyone went to court, I'm sure that somebody would say we have the right to at least bring it.
Somebody would have the right, yes, to at least request it.
But then, when you're sitting up here, it kind of really puts us in an uncomfortable position, whichever variance or if it is, of saying, but we kind of have a mandate here. So, anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, and discussions...
Roger, do you have anything to add to...
Well, it does look quite cut and dry, and...
And I don't remember anything else in this plan being that directive.
And maybe I was just looking for it, I don't know, but that, just, when I read it, I read it several times, thinking, that is really strong, probably because it's such a controversial issue, that's why it seems quite strong.
But it is black and white.
But it is pretty black and white.
Yeah. I think, you know, something to the effect of strongly suggesting that variances not be granted, you know? Why don't we go ahead and make that change?
Is everyone okay with that?
I had a second, and again, this is just a kind of a question, it's on page 4-3, under objective one, number three, and it's just a clarification, it says accommodate market demand, blah, blah, for between 2009 and 2020. Should we update that, so it says between 2016 and 2020, or is it okay to leave that? Because...
That was the standard at the time, and so, you know, you could, you could say 300, but we really don't have the data to support it, so I would leave it the way it is.
Okay. And then, my third question came on 6-2, and it's the chart, table 15.
Excuse me, 6 dash what?
6-2, under functional classification plans for roads, that's the roadway design standards.
Okay.
And I never would have even paid attention to that, except because of the discussion we had tonight with the variance that we did not grant. Mike Landecker's letter to us pointed out that that street is not 66 feet wide.
Right.
And we probably have a number of streets right in that area that have the same issue, probably in other places too. So, then, what I'm thinking is, do we need somewhere in the future to be looking at that as something for the comprehensive plan, or for the, maybe the ordinances, that some of these roadways need to have something done about them?
Well, these, this is prospective, it's looking forward. We wouldn't allow any 50-foot right-of-ways anymore. You know, there's a few 60-foot right-of-ways in town as well, most are 66. But I would just look at this as being prospective, and we're just going, this is the new standard that we expect.
Is it something that we should address at some point in the future, not the planning commission particularly, but maybe the city council is looking at redoing some of those streets, or in a case like that, there's already so little front yard that we...
Well, we can't demand, we'd have to pay for additional right-of-way if that were the case, and we really can't demand it in a neighborhood like that. I do notice that the pavement width, though, I think we have a minimum of 22 feet, not 24 feet, for local roads, so I'm going to check on that one.
Okay. Is there ever the possibility of doing something like Mike suggested, and that's to make some of those streets one-way? of those streets one-way?
Certainly, I mean, that's something we could look at. It's easier said than done, it causes a lot of people, a lot of confusion, but I mean, if you look at Pequot Lakes, they just made one street a one-way, so they could provide for parking on both sides. And I've done that too before in the past, for specifically for parking. But I'm not so sure in that instance, that's what you'd want to do.
Okay. Like I say, I wouldn't have even noticed if it wasn't that we had that variance in front of us.
Again, I think a lot of this is for perspective, new developments and guiding new developments, it necessarily to make the old developments conform to today's standards, and it's something you won't be able to accomplish, quite frankly. That's a, that's a goal that you can't even think about achieving.
I just think from the safety factor, you know, on a street like that, truly, wherever you pull out, you better be paying attention on that street.
Well, then, you know, that's, that's one of the nice things about that street, it isn't, it isn't a straight stretch all the way through, it's got some trees on either side, there are some calming effects on that, on that street.
I'm surprised they haven't come in and asked to have a lower speed limit on there, frankly, just because, I know that's hard to achieve, but.
You can't do it, state law, the minimum is 30 miles per hour, unless it's an alley, considered an alley, that's the only other time.
They just changed that though, on Weaver Point Road somewhere?
You can go above 30, but you can't go below 30.
Okay.
So Joe, in your memo to us, it appears as though we need to make a motion to bring this change to a public hearing.
Yeah, we need a public hearing on this too, and Grant, given the fact that March may not be a good month, you know, if we can get a consensus to have the public hearing in April, we can do that too.
And you see two public hearings, that's a meeting is feasible?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I don't know how much discussion we'll have on these items, but I think it's possible.
Items like this too, I think having them maybe April versus March, there may be residents out there that might be interested in attending, and a lot of them are gone in March.
Sure, sure. Yeah, well, that's a good point.
So do we need to take any action to?
No, just as long as your consensus is that we can bring this back to you for a public, excuse me, public hearing in April, I'm happy.
We'll move to other. I have one quick thing, that I noted in a article in the Brainer Dispatch, talking about the beginning of construction of the bypass, the 371 bypass, kind of telling people to be prepared. Before we get into that issue, Roger, we've been asked by the city council to be involved in the planning of road construction changes for Highway 11. So that's going to be another interesting thing for us to be involved in.
Maybe I can just give him a little background. The, the school, well, let's back up even further. When the school was built, they, you know, built it the way it basically is, you know, with a parking lot and the road coming in, what have you. Several years ago, maybe it was 2011 or 12, they reconstructed County Road 11, and at that time, they had discussions with the school about some of the traffic problems they have at the entrance, particularly the parents come in, they, they park and wait for their kids, and they block up County Road 11, so they were trying to find ways of solving that problem. That led to a discussion about controlled access from the county, and what are we gonna do about the streets that are in that neighborhood, Edgewater Farm Road, Hunt Boulevard, what's the one by the bank, Wildwood Court, those roads. And the county wanted us to do some spacing, they wanted us to move the roads, yeah, that's some of this over here. And we started down this path of trying to figure out what's, what's the appropriate thing to do. The planning commission finally said, if change occurs, the majority of the cost and the effort's gonna be on the school's back, so why don't we let the school take the lead? And, and so the school kind of took the lead, and this last year, then, they installed these slow school zone signs, and I think that has probably put a rest to this issue for a number of years. Jerry and I met with the school superintendent two months ago, and he seemed to think that it's working fine. They still have the issue with parents and parking and blocking the roadway, it's better, but it's not what they'd like to see, but we can't figure out, and they can't figure out, a long-term solution. So I'm not sure where that's going, but I don't know that we're on first anymore.
I'm glad we did this, just to kind of re, recall what.
Sure.
What we were doing and what has been done, because, yeah, that, the blinking signs and the, is all new since we.
Since we last talked about this, yeah.
Well, what I was going to mention is, did anyone else see that article in the Brainer Dispatch? Apparently, there will be a roundabout.
Yes. Well, is that a roundabout, or is that a cloverleaf?
Well, they're calling it a roundabout in this, in this article, and the only reason I bring that up is, do you remember us discussing the option of a roundabout at the school?
Roundabout on 371, or a roundabout on?
I thought the picture looked like a.
Kind of like in Nisswa.
I thought the picture looked like a cloverleaf.
They used the term roundabout, and that was a press release from the Department of Transportation.
You know, I didn't see the article, but I think what I heard was that there is gonna be like a diamond interchange, but when it meets County Road 11, there'll be a roundabout for that interchange between that exit ramp and County Road 11.
That's the impression I got from this article, that's interesting.
But 371 won't go through a roundabout?
Oh, no, no. I'm sorry, Larry, no. Because I remember, I remember in that discussion of the option or the potential of a roundabout there, us saying, well, my goodness, that, that seems to be a really drastic move. But apparently, there's going to be one on 11, anyway.
They're not so drastic.
No.
Well, there's that one in Nisswa, right on 371.
Well, I, yeah, and I, but I think the issue, when we were talking about it here, was that the traffic goes zipping down.
Yes.
By the school at 55, and to go from 55 to a roundabout, whereas like in Nisswa, where they have the roundabout, the, the traffic was already at 30 or something, so that would be the difference.
People go a minimum of 55.
Okay, it's up at 55.
A lot of roundabouts on 55 mile an hour roads, you know, like Highway 7, west of St. Bonfaisius.
Right, there are, yeah. I think they're probably more in areas that are a little more rural than 11 is, you know, along here, but, but they were meant to be traffic calming, because eventually, there will be residential.
Yeah, matter of fact, there's one on 7, that's a two-lane.
Yeah.
Roundabout.
Yeah.
Actually, a roundabout is, MINDOT is using those two in areas that they want, they would rather not see a stoplight, they, they slow the traffic down, but it keeps it moving, and it reduces the accidents drastically.
And I think they're, they're looking at them in areas that they feel are eventually going to be residential, you know, so they're talking about everything from school buses to whatever, especially on 7, where you get out of town like the on St. Bonfaisius.
So it sounds like our involvement in that planning is not immediate.
No. I think if you were to have some kind of future development that would happen on the north side of, of County Road 11, then you'd be back talking about how do we do some access management there, and how do we provide for some secondary streets. But I don't think you're gonna see that until we, we have some kind of development potential.
When, I guess that was a question that I kind of thought too, when I look at this map again now, we're still talking about Edgewater Road, I guess, going up to, what, to Bushman?
Possibly.
Possibly, in one of these maps, and then Ranchette going beyond Bushman up towards whatever, 16, I suppose. Those are really long-range plans based on development, is that, yeah.
Thank you for that update.
Yeah, not a problem.
Anything else under other? Now, we'll move to open forum number two, and we'll close open forum number two, and entertain a motion to adjourn. I will call the meeting adjourned. There you go.
Why don't you just watch all this on TV and stuff?
It's entertainment.
We do put them on YouTube now, and you can watch it, a link on Roof City's website.
I think you need to get a life, if this is how you're handling your.